... the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will follow with your heaven. Dear Lord God, we thank you for your son, our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. Dear Lord God, we thank you for your many manifold blessings you bestowed upon each and every one of us on a daily basis. Dear Lord God, we ask that you continuously bless our mayor and city council on tonight as well as our city manager, our city attorney, and the department heads as we make decisions for the betterment of all the citizens of Dillon. And in everything we do, we pray we be careful to give your name the glory, your name the honor, and your name the praise. For this, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Good crowd. Thanks for coming out. Uh, thank you for hearing about the business of the city. Uh, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Before you do it, Dr. Wallace, need to add an executive session.
Okay.
We got some information this morning on First Bank that we need to discuss in executive session.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of an executive session to discuss First Bank?
Okay.
Second. All those in favor?
Uh, uh. Also need to remove the last item under new business, which will be a part of this discussion in the executive session.
Okay. Can we amend that? Well, can I get a motion to remove that?
That would be S and E N D, environmental service. I make motion.
Now, second. All those in favor?
Uh, uh.
Okay. Um, okay. Can I get approval for the regular meeting in the spa- uh, regular meeting September 9th and a special meeting September 30th?
Second.
All those in favor?
Uh, uh.
All right. Um, you know, I don't have a, I don't have a whole lot to report. Um, we, uh, um, personally, we're looking at a building downtown to renovate, and I noticed, um, Saturday morning, and, and, Bert, I'm not, I'm not throwing y'all under the bus, but, you know, those bids that specifically, I was looking at the price building, those have lights in them or, or they have timers? No, there's not electricity there.
Yeah, there's electricity, is what it is, the receptacle.
Okay.
Is what's in there.
So you had the opportunity, if we wanted to add lighting, um, to those.
Possible, yes, sir.
And there, um, that would, uh, that certainly enhanced the, uh, the looks of our downtown and, you know, those bids.
Like some landscape lighting or something?
Yeah, yeah. You know, something, uh, something pretty simple, low voltage, uh, um, we probably, I, I don't know, you'd have to have a meter on each one of those.
Well, that's meter.
Yeah, they're, you've got to have it now.
We did some in south, in the railroad avenue, south and north railroad avenue. We redid those back in the spring, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Because they were corroded inside.
Well, this is pretty, I mean, the thing's hanging out that far, and it just, it just really looks unkept. Um, you know, and I, I don't know, and I, like I say, when you busy.
I'm bringing up something in my report today.
Okay.
To, to look at some of that as well.
Okay. All right, good. But, um, other than that, um, I'm a little concerned about, um, uh, where we are with our potential development, uh, as it relates to the inland port. Um, you know, I, I, I don't know, I feel I'm, I'm a bit out of the loop because I haven't, I'm not included in it. I'm not saying that I need to be included in it, but, um, I just can't believe that there's not some role that mayor, mayor pro temp, whatever, uh, shouldn't have in, in trying to help, uh, maximize our potential with the growth and opportunities with the inland port. I've heard nothing, neither have I. Uh, and that's, you know, I, I, I don't know what that's about. I went to the, uh, meeting that was the, um, private, uh, uh.
Public partnership.
Public partnership and, um, you know, it was an expensive meeting for me, and I felt like I did very little there and got, contributed very little and got very little out of it. So I'm not sure that, uh, that'll be something that I'll go back to. But anyway, if you, you know, maybe touch base with.
Usually lay and, and see what, see what we can do is. Well, usually, we're always on the back end because the only thing we have quote-unquote offer is salt.
Yeah.
So we're usually on the back end of those things.
Well, and, and, and that's because why.
That's.
I mean, to me, it's.
Because we don't have anything else on the table. I mean.
I know, but, but, but we've got, uh, all these, you know, as people look at Dillon, they go to that internet and, and the first thing they pull up is our crime. And, uh, if that's what people think of Dillon, then, you know, and don't see the city that is, had a, a unqualified audit for 12, 15 years, I mean, we do things right here. Uh, we've got a great city. We've got a great life here. We got, you know, and, and nobody knows about it, nobody. We have recruits that come in and, and I, I was critical of the hospital because of the way they're recruiting, and we turned that around a little bit where now, instead of just visiting and going out to a nice restaurant, not in Dillon, um, um, they, they come here and, uh, they, uh, have a party with people around their same age. And we had success getting two or three physicians that are, that are moving to the area. So, um, you know, the people, we, we, we have to get the people out there so that some of these, uh, uh, industrial leaders that, that are hitting the plants are, uh, are able to see that they can have a life here and spouses can see that they have a life here and schools and, anyway. Um, so I don't have a lot to, I don't have a lot to say. Um, uh, we had Starbucks, uh, I think that broke around.
Correct. They were digging out there and stopping off some stuff this afternoon.
Uh, I don't, I don't have any connection to that as well, but, um, I know that, um, many of these companies partner with other companies and, uh, uh, just looking at the, the venue that they're, they're moving into, um, I just think there's other things coming. Uh, and it's just a, just a gut feeling. I have no inside information. But, um, things, things as I know are running smoothly. I reviewed the budget in length, and I think that, um, we'll go over a little bit of that when, um, Janet does her financial report. That's all I have.
Or you should have found, when we came in, in front of you, I did a report today, last month, and been several months past, we talked about stormwater and our plans to hire additional employees to actually do this operation. So I kind of broke down some information along with an attachment that Janet did for me as well to show you salaries on the second page of what it costs us for an employee of eleven dollars per hour and fifteen dollars per hour. And then on the first page, I give you information of what the revenue balance is as of September 30th of this year, which is one hundred and sixty-eight thousand and sixty-eight dollars, what we're projecting to collect October this year through June, um, 2020, which is an additional hundred and four thousand dollars.
What's the annual budget of that?
Hundred and thirty-eight.
No, no, not annual receipts.
Before we anticipate a hundred and thirty-eight thousand.
In that ballpark.
And we'll have sixty-two thousand as our, um, tractor truck payment.
Which is due this month.
And we've got three, two more of that.
Yes.
But probably to be on the safe side, we ought to include a, a, a capital, part of our budget is capital outlay. We ought to leave, we can't beat that whole hundred and thirty-eight thousand up for employees.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. And, and if you just look at that, you know, it's showing you at the end of June 30th, 2020, if we would hire two employees, uh, starting in January of 2020, which would be the last two quarters of our fiscal year, um, we would have a total projected balance of a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, two hundred and seven dollars. And then just take that same numbers and move it down through the next two years, then we still have, um, the sixty-two thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollar tractor truck payment, um, in October 2020 and October 2021. At the end of the year of June 30th, 2022, we'd have a hundred and forty-eight dollars, a hundred and forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars. Now, all that being said, there's no capital projects involved in that money. There's no fuel cost in this projection. There's no equipment, uh, that we'd have to rent, no materials that we would need to do anything like that. I just, you know, to give you an idea of what we had, and I put in, just to have a, a starting point, back up on the top of this, salaries for two employees, January through June, 2020, which would be, if we did something, that would be the earliest I think we could do anything.
You didn't say.
This coming January.
Correct.
Which based on.
Why don't you think we need two at a time? I mean.
Bert?
Well, if I'm gonna run the truck and do what we're supposed to do, we're gonna need two.
Two people?
Yes, two man operation.
All right, you're gonna run the, you're gonna run the truck, so we don't need somebody making twenty dollars an hour running the truck, is that?
No, no, the person that we'd hire to run the truck is fifteen dollars an hour running.
Okay.
And then the labor would be eleven dollars an hour.
How much time you dedicate to storm drains around here?
Uh, when we can, right now.
When you can?
Yes.
How about to see the year numbers? We hired any in the last two months?
Yes, we hired one.
He came back?
Yeah, that's a.
We hired him.
I had to switch the paper around.
But, you know, that would be just a, a ballpark, very, very general, um, projection on what those expenses would be for the next two and a half years, uh, starting in January of this year. Um, once again, there's not even, this hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars that I'm projecting would be money in hand. There's no money taken out of all of this for.
Capital.
For, for work. I mean, this is just.
Right.
Somebody to run the truck, somebody to.
Right.
To clean, there's, there's no material. We just did.
Too many flooding last night?
Nah, not my knowledge. We had about an inch of rain there.
Yeah, and it came down fast.
And, and one example I'll give you that where we've done something so far as, as far as materials, then we're, we're cleaning canals as we go and some catch spaces, but we had to replace 200-foot of pipe off of Roberts Road. Now, the state gave us the 200-foot of pipe, but if we went out and bought it, it was, what, about five thousand dollars, Bert?
Yes, sir.
For pipe. Um, we had probably five hundred dollars in some other material and how much, we rented a small trucker.
Yes, sir.
How much was that?
I think it was like twenty-three hundred.
So, you know, we had roughly about nine grand just in 200-foot of pipe that we replaced, even though.
If the pipe was free.
If, well, I say it would have been about nine grand with, with the five thousand dollars worth of pipe. Um, and that was a huge pipe.
Yeah, it's a big pipe, thirty-inch pipe.
And not that there's many like that we could do.
What fed that?
I mean, it's.
Lee Circle, Johnson Drive.
Was there a thirty-inch pipe coming into it?
No. Well, the twenty-four coming into it, but the pipe that was coming into was like a fifteen to eighteen-inch pipe that was half collapsed. It was old orange bird pipe.
But it was going to, to the lake.
So what we have is a bigger pipe coming to a smaller pipe, which is not the way it's supposed to work.
Right.
It's supposed to be a smaller to a bigger, and when you come to smaller, you want to shrink.
Is it more than one pipe?
No, it's just one.
Just one?
But I think we did a, I think we did ourselves some good with this one.
Correct. And there's, and there's more out there.
Yeah.
I mean, we know there's more out there.
Some of those projects, we're gonna have to go to the state for, I mean, like the one behind East, and there, and, don't you have a lot of collapse?
That's sewer line. That's sewer line.
It's so big.
I thought that was storm drain. That, that sewer. That sewer. We replaced some of that about three or four years ago. We've got to replace more. That's not stormwater, that's sewer.
We got a lot of eye and eye there, or I mean?
Don't know.
It's not good to have leaking sewers.
No, it's not.
Well, it's, the sewage is not really leaking, it's probably, you know, the pipes have settled a little bit, so you, you draw in, you draw in eye and eye. I mean, you're not actually leaking sewage.
Okay.
You're just getting groundwater, penetrating the pipe, and when that happens, it sucks a little sand, so the ground gets.
Okay.
All right. So when do we initiate this charge with the stormwater to the town?
Two years ago.
July of 18.
July of 18.
July of 18. Cause we collected.
Collected a year before we.
Yeah, we collected a hundred and thirty-some odd thousand in the first year, and we've collected so far thirty-four thousand, I believe, come up to that hundred and sixty-some odd.
That's 25% of budget. I, I know, I remember that number, it was, you know, right on what it's supposed to be. So what's your thoughts?
So you're saying it's affordable January 20?
Pardon?
You're saying it's affordable within our budget line, 41, 48, 4, which is half. So your suggestion would be to start at January?
Well, that would be the earliest I would suggest we start. Now, once again, in, in all of this breakdown, there's no, there's no cost associated with, with doing anything other than taking the truck, cleaning that line. There's no cost of replacing.
So what's the expected cost to be on a hundred and sixty-eight, two oh, two oh seven we have left open? I mean, if y'all have any projections of what else our costs would be?
No, not until we get to them and see. I mean, well, you know, it's just, you never know when you have a, you know, equipment breakdown or you run into some bad pipe, that you may have to, you know, spend some extra money on to have a storm, you may have to rent some equipment, what we've done in the past. But, you know, I think, you know, if you're talking to Glenn, we think it's feasible, you know.
So it's feasible, so obviously June 30th of '22 at 148, 11, that's our final payment. Then that would go up to by the next year.
That's sixty-two, four forty-four.
That's correct.
That is correct.
Okay.
Yeah, but to, you know, and, and when you, when I think of a project, you know, materials are gonna be about 50%, and I know that it's a little difficult to budgeting, but, um, you know, we're, if we're gonna do projects, we need to probably leave some, some money in capital to, in order to be able to do the project other than just cleaning. Um, hopefully we can get through the pay, payment of the tractor trucks before we have to do that. But, I mean, sixty-two thousand in that, in that, you know, department is not gonna go very far towards, uh, uh, your materials.
But Bert has a way to cover this, and to, if we waited until the next fiscal year at July 20?
What we're doing right now.
We'd be able to cover stuff.
But just to get you called up, when council agreed and voted to put this stormwater fee on, the idea was to hire, to hire two people to, to do it on a daily basis. Now, it's just really trying to figure out when is that the appropriate time to do it is, is key. Right now, I hate to use the word haphazardly, but, you know, that's what we're doing at this point in time.
Yeah.
Um, we spent a good bit of time in the summer and up till the first of September trying to do some things in, in certain areas. Um, but, you know, putting two people on today or, or next year or winter is not gonna resolve our problems. It's just gonna help us get there.
Yeah.
A little quicker. Cause we won't know until we run into something and have to dig up to see what it is, and then, you know.
And we don't know what we've done already.
That is true.
I mean, I think, I think we've had a big.
We're very anxious to.
Yeah.
Now, I don't wanna say.
We don't wanna say.
We'd like to say something just to test.
We'd like to have a few inches of rain this week.
We were fortunate on this one project we did off of Roberts Road that the state gave us the pipe. Not saying they won't do that on other ones as well, but then again, who knows? There's not a guarantee there.
Now, also, we've done a lot of ditching with recently, you know, hopefully fixed the problem on upper south, where drains the south fourth, eighth, and tenth area, that the big canal we, we got in and, and it's probably never been in, I, I hadn't been in in 20 years, and we, you know, found a big beaver dam in there that was holding a lot of the water back, and we, we got that out. Once it came out, the water dropped all the way back to town over two foot overnight. So, you know, now we've got that opened up, where we can get in there and monitor it more routinely, so hopefully that's gonna help our problem a lot also.
Well, the way it looks to me, if you balance your numbers out, if we wait until the next fiscal year, we would have 200 running to the year, and that would obviously be enough to pass out running from that four hole.
You think that would give you time to get ready for the, for the next hurricane season?
You talking about.
Delaying six months.
Starting in July.
Starting in July.
I think frankly, honestly, with the way we do it now.
Bert, you tell us what you need. I mean, you, you need them in January, or you, can you wait to June?
Well, the goal is, is to do as much as we can during the winter time, because then we may have not just two people, we may have four people doing it from other, other sections of his department, cause that's when the grass cutting is done and things of that nature. Obviously, if you got two more people, you can do more work.
This is, this is much needed in the city. I'm, I'm.
It is. It is much needed. The way, the way we, the way we do it now is, it's mostly on complaint basis, because we have to, you know, most of the guys, they do one job, they have to do all the jobs. So we'll have to put this off, we gotta do this. So if you had the two people.
Yeah.
You know, you would, you would be ahead.
So what you're saying is hurricane season would start obviously toward the end of July, so we could grab hold of January and the winter here and go ahead and make it.
And start doing some, start doing some stuff.
Yeah, that's a good one.
And it, and, and it will not, um, affect the budget from a need, um, if we're taking it out of this fund.
No. The only, the only thing we'd have to do is, is next month, if, if you agree to do this, is next month we have to come back with a budget amendment for it.
Okay.
We'd have to do that.
Where do the, where do, uh, Third Avenue, right, Third Avenue, Carmichael Drive, Carmichael Avenue. Before you did, run that water off too.
Sir?
Run that water off.
On Third?
On Third, and when you go out there, Carmichael Avenue, go, go back to Rappahannock Boulevard.
Yeah, it goes out behind Sabre Lot and goes kind of back towards Mill Pond Apartment, and it goes out towards Railroad Track and goes towards the river.
Runs parallel to Railroad Track.
Right.
Goes on the Congress.
You go on the more after Boulevard?
Yes. Right about where the change place is, down on the corner by Sabre Lot, comes out right there, there's a big ditch right there, comes it out, where it comes out.
Well, those ditches, those ditches all, all, uh, Third is pretty good, but those ones on Rappahannock Boulevard, they didn't, they dig it out, so they didn't make it down to the, where they go on there. Cause one part of it is closed all the way out, so the water can't run down. You know what I mean?
You get with me, show me, and we'll, we'll do, we can take care of it.
All right. So, um, is council directing him to bring back, or amend it to the budget? I reckon we need to have a motion.
Make a motion and bring it back to the budget.
Second.
All is in favor?
All right, God. So we'll bring back coordinates next month to amend the budget, and then if that passes, we'll have a safe reading in December, and we can start advertising and hopefully have someone in place come January. Second item I have, um, just piggybacking off of where you're talking about the little planters on Main Street. Bert went out and measured the, the parking spaces we have on Main from Martin Luther King up to Railroad Avenue at this point in time, and they're roughly 10 feet wide and about 18 feet long. If we took out the two middle planters on each side of the block, there's four all total, one on each corner and then two in the middle. If we took those two out on, on each side of the block, which would be a total of four, we possibly add additional three to four parking spots.
Two?
Mm-hmm.
Per block.
Per block.
On each side?
On the.
Two on, two on one side, two on another side. You lose a lot of parking to where your angle, then you got the two on the end, so you got to fit them in between those two. And, you know, you possibly, most of them are 10 feet wide now, you could bring them in a foot, you maybe gain two a block on one side or maybe one in the, that's just a little better measuring. We briefly measured it, but it's, you could possibly gain two spots on one side, so two on the other be four spots.
I guess, you know, we, we spent so much money on, on revitalizing downtown, basically we're just, you know, we're, we're gonna go backwards.
Hey, you gotta remember, that was, that was 20 years ago. And, and at the time, that was, that's, that was council's thought to do, and it still may be council's thought to do. I mean, we gotta look at maybe, you know, enticing in another way if parking is an issue, which, you know, hopefully it is an issue, but the issue would be, cause we're booming businesses on Main Street, and every store has something going on there. And, and, and we bring this up, or I bring it up, just to let you know that I will go forward with that DOT, cause it may be two costs per head also, cause I'm not sure what they will make us do. Now, we, we took out that middle island on, um, east of 301 on Main, and there was in about thirty-five thousand dollars worth of asphalt work, which the C funds are paying for that, they haven't paid us yet, they're, they're reimbursing us for that, but, um, but we took the middle island out, and, and that's, that was one of the reasons we had to do the whole road of, of that block. I don't know if we would have to do that, excuse me, if we took out some of those planters on the curb lawn, on the curb side. They may not, or they may, I don't know, we have to find out, and then it may be just two costs where we couldn't do it. But I, I think it's something we need to look at.
Well, I, I mean, I, direction of council, I mean, I don't wanna make a decision tonight.
No, 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 not at all. I think we need to.
What cost is, what DOT says, I mean, this is, this is something that, you know, we need to really look at.
No, there's no. Tonight's. They can get a definite on how much parking we will actually create.
Yeah, right.
We're not gonna create, but, you know.
Couple of parking spaces.
Yeah.
I'm still really in favor of trying to, um, um, gut a central building, you know, in the block and try to access back to some, some nice parking and, uh, that, that we do, and, and make a nice, you know, like we did on MacArthur, uh, next to the, uh, to the theater. Um, I just think that, it's just hard, you know? We take that out, I mean, the whole idea was to soften up what it looks like downtown, and, you know, you take those out, it's just gonna get hard again. Um, and if we have opportunities for parking, I mean, I want the parking, but, and I think council does, but it just, I don't wanna do it at a cost of, of aesthetics.
And then the last thing I have is also on Main Street, I think last month or month before, there was a discussion by council about the island on East Main beside Pizza Hut, and maybe taking that one out, just, I mean, Kings, I said Pizza Hut, thank you. Kings, um, it's, look at taking that out. So I've asked Terry Marsh, who helped us, who's one of the east side of 301, to get with DOT and see if this is possible and what kind of cost estimate that would be.
And I, you know, I don't understand why the traffic coming from the beach would be an issue, but the, the traffic going that way, how often is that a problem?
I don't know that it is. I mean, not from, I, I go down a good bit. The only thing you could do is if you took it out, it would give the left turn lane a little more room to get in and turn left at 301, but other than that, that's often.
Well, yeah, same way you did. We'll discuss it right after the end of that conversation.
No, sir.
Okay. Now, my thought on the opposite side of the red line, when you get to MacArthur, all the way down to Main Street.
301?
I mean, my thought perspective would be to remove those planters all the way to Main and down MacArthur and open it up in two lanes, and it would give you more exposure And it would give you more exposure down Hampton to keep more activity in that area, so you won't have the problem with all Hampton Street. But the point is, the value from that would be, we have empty property down there, and I know it's privately owned, that didn't matter to me, but from an infrastructure standpoint view, if we open that up, we will be able to have our parking back for that corner, on both corners, like we used to have with the belt building and the other buildings. Someone could be able to either buy it or build on it. And that would help our downtown to have new structures. But we gonna have them.
You sold that block to Barnes?
Well, I know it's privately owned, but the point is, they can't do anything with it. He's the only one it has use for, but I'm saying if you did, it could give the potential for someone to buy it and build on it. And it would, I mean, everybody here and in this community wants places to be built. I mean, we're not taking care of these planters as it is. I mean, you can walk down, have lanes dead, free course of plants dead. The larger trees need to be cut down, you can't even see the buildings. Frank Merwells need to be trimmed every February. Um, you could change your planning, go ahead and show exposure to the streets, to the city, to the building, and maybe people will be encouraged to fix the buildings up. I know they have to be, they have to trade hands down the line and I'm just thinking from a capitalist standpoint view. We gotta move the buildings, obviously they're being sold as we speak, obviously they are. And there's other investors that wanna buy these buildings, but there's always something to look, y'all. It's just not there. And if we're not budgeting to take care of it, then we've got too much out there.
It is a handful for Burke's people to do that on a daily basis, the number of people that we have.
Well, assuming like in Burke's perspective, every corner planter, you had irrigation to the corner, truck runs over it, irrigation is destroyed. Irrigation should have been, be put in the center. The electrical should have been in the center, away from anybody getting to it from a car or a truck. I mean, I don't know who made these designs and I know it's done 30 odd years ago, but if we do not remodel, we gonna lose a lot of buildings down there. I heard a lot of it walk in.
The middle island though, that Terry Marsh is talking to the state, when do you feel like you're gonna get some information?
Hopefully, I met with him last week, week before last, as we defined our old plans that we had. He was taking it to the state and, you know, he's got to draw it up, what we take that out.
But you removing that other one, you got radio views. People are just so excited that mess is gone.
Hopefully, it might be next month, I have something back from him on that.
May or no disrespect to green spaces of Amal Park, but I think we can maintain it better contractually and budget it better. We've got so much to take care of, these guys cannot take care of it. I look at it, it's just, it will win with me to drive around looking at it.
And all this, well, I can give you information, that information, I mean, there's no, like I said, we're working on it just to see what it would be and then we'll bring it back to council for approval and that could be November, December, first of June, depending on how long it takes us to get the information. That's all I have at this point.
All right, finance, get it?
All right. In general fund, all our cash accounts is for $1,780,903. Our revenues for 2019 was $1,40894. Out of that though, $252,855, that was loan proceeds. So you take that out and we would only have $261,292 more in 2019 than we did in 2008. Then on our expenses, we had, um, in 2018, we had $1,591,432. In 2019 year-to-date, we've got $1,954,338. But out of that, um, the $362,906, we should take away the $252,855, the loan where we paid that, would leave $110,821 difference.
Still ahead.
Well, we spent more, more in 2019 than we did on.
We spent more, but we've also got higher revenues.
Right.
We've got, our revenues over expenses are plus 100. Let me ask you this, you know, complex and street lighting is at 33% of budget. Um, that's line item 11-00380. Um, you know, we're at 25%, that, that seems like, that would be a pretty constant thing. Why would that be? Have we just missed budget?
Where is that?
11-00.
Complex and street lighting?
Yeah.
Uh, is that all street lighting? Is that what that is?
Yes. It's how the bills come in and how they pay, is how it hits the budget.
Yeah, I didn't get the line item on this, but tort liability, we're already at 50, 50% of budget and we're three, uh, three months in.
And that's paid, that's kinda paid at one time.
Paid at one time, okay.
That's not a monthly?
When I was hoping, yeah.
That's not a monthly payment? Maybe paid quarters.
Could I ask a few questions? I highlighted a few items online. I noticed we're a good many, we have a good many areas that were kinda at over budget.
And which, which one are you looking at?
I was looking at, um, obviously the city dealer and water and sewer financial highlight on that third page back, you got, I'm not sure what. Water and sewer.
Yeah. She got it, yeah.
Don't you got anything in general fund or that?
Um, in the general.
What'd you have in water and sewer?
You gonna do water and sewer next? In water and sewer on the third page, you had diesel. What is that? And we're already over.
A lot of that's generator and pump that we had to rent and buy that pump and all. Now, you tell me, what you showing there, making sure on the right one shows diesel where we budgeted $200?
And we already spent $390?
Yeah, that's just because we use more diesel than, when we brought in some generators.
So that'd be something we adjust for the next fiscal year. Okay. How about the safety equipment gloves and we're already almost to it, is that something we gonna continue?
Yeah, a thousand dollars, we've already spent, 752, yeah. It won't be over a thousand, shouldn't be.
Double on a half for, at the fifth page under unemployment. Now, why would unemployment, we would be over budget? Are we paying?
We pay that annual.
So you're paying an employment date?
We pay around the first of July.
So you doubled up?
Yeah, we pay, we, no, I have to go back and check that, but then that also covers anybody that we pay unemployment on.
Because we're almost double.
Yeah. It is based on your salaries and the departments you're in.
Um, down at the bottom, that machinery and equipment repairs were almost, were.
Same page.
Yeah, we're at 40 and we have to have it a few months.
That's probably a motor or something.
Or own.
Machinery.
We can get a motor or something goes out, that'd be $30,000.
Same on that vehicle repair thing too. Yeah, there are a good many and we keep on going down. I mean, we got diesel subscriptions, engineering services, I guess on engineering services.
Projects that they look at, you know, that that falls under and you don't know when you budget that exactly.
Group going in.
Yeah, yes.
Waterline repair is almost gone, 25.
We got a lot of, you remember the last thing we talked about, the issues we've been having with the new well coming on?
And what kind of, um, now how do we, how do we view that from this point to next June 30th?
We take, we look at trends.
Okay.
I mean, go back and see, our, our budget number that we'll throw out is based on the last five or six years, what we've done. So, just depending on the trend.
Like our workman's comp, I see that, is that they adjusted our premium and that in workman's comp?
Every year it is.
Okay, so that was an increase that we weren't anticipating they've gone up.
Right, we never know until we get it.
And computer, I guess that was something y'all already scheduled to buy.
What was that one?
What was that out?
That was down at the bottom, computer maintenance quarter fees and the one above, computer software maintenance.
That's annual.
So that's a company you're paying?
Software and maintenance, yes. We have two different companies.
Now miscellaneous, what is in capital net, so chariote way of budget?
What page are you on again?
Down at the bottom of that, miscellaneous, that's, um.
You're talking about 4,331,74, is that what we have?
No, we're not. You got a hundred dollars and we spent $2,232,800 miscellaneous under 46.0, is that what you're considering for?
46, okay, yeah, yes, I can tell you what that is.
They just unanticipated costs.
Well, yes, and I'll go ahead and tell you, that's credit card charges.
When you say credit card charges, what do you mean?
What it is, is we take, um, credit cards, credit debits to collect payments.
And that's what bank charges?
Yes.
Bank, yeah, their fees, they're exempt.
Do you wanna review that?
Okay, okay. In our water and sewer, our total non-restricted accounts, we've got $1,594,568 in it. On our restricted accounts, we've got $1,828,79. Total of all cash accounts was $3,422,647. Okay, in our revenues, we have brought in $468,901 versus 2018, $2,206,756. But what that has included in it is our CDBG grant and our REA grant, revenues that come in, which was $337,423. Brings that down to $1,131,478 for 2019.
By the way, uh, last year.
Do what? All right, and last year, let me, let me tell you that.
Oh, you had some.
Yeah, we did. We had our loan insurance proceeds and grant money of $153,840, which brought that back down to $1,52,962 for revenues. Which was, um.
Just product yield.
Which would be the difference of $78,562 more in 2019 than we did in 18. Y'all just wanna be trusty, I'll tell you that. And then our expenditures for 2019 was $987,530. Year-to-date in 18 was $786,148, a difference of $201,382. And that could include the expense of the grants and motors and stuff like that that we have in water and sewer.
How much water we got left in the ground?
In the ground, I'd have to look, because we got several of them.
Yeah, we have two.
Two of them going.
On water and sewer.
Okay, on the golf course, in 2019, let me tell you, our cash account right now, we got, we had $3,001 in it as of June 30th. In 2019, our revenues was $50,468. In 2018, it was $50,39, which is $429 more in 19 than it was in 18. Um, and I've transferred $45,000 year-to-date on that as of June 30th. Our expenses in 19 was $102,782. In 2018, it was $93,447. Okay, and so $9,335 was spent more in 19 than it was in 18. Um, and also to let you know, we will not be getting our money from the county until January of 2020. So, okay, 2% hospitality funds, we've got them there. Um, as of June 30th, $975,702. Our revenues for 2019, $158,975. In 2018, it was $149,343, a difference of $9,632 more in revenues in 2019 than 18.
Now, is the county gonna be in position to pay us half of that other bag, the 75, or are we gonna be our bill?
They just pay us give.
Even though we're six months out?
It doesn't matter. They do an annual payment of $50,000.
Can you tell anybody they won't pay the $50,000?
I could not. I called the finance director Thursday and asked him, could he tell me please when we're gonna get it? And he said it will be January.
I think we got it. This past year, we came.
I wish we could get them to be more accurate than that golf course. I think it should be.
Okay, that's it.
Okay. So, I got a question before you get, if I can find it, I have it. It was on the signs and everything, you budgeted.
Where at?
It's the local ATAX 3% money. The expenses? The miscellaneous and the signs and the donations, you budgeted $45,000. This month alone, you spent $13,000. Do you know why?
I'd have to go look that up, tell you exactly what all was spent on that, but it's, I would be glad to.
Yes, sir.
All right, um, is that it, Jen?
Yes, sir.
All right. Blue P D Coalition. There she is.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Asia Colvin and I'm the intern at P D Coalition against domestic violence and sexual assault. On behalf of the P D Coalition, I would like to thank you council for giving us this time to express our appreciation for your acknowledgement of the necessity of our services. October is National Domestic Violence Month and our goal is to raise awareness about domestic violence and the effects it has on families and the community. South Carolina has ranked in the top 10 states for the rate of murder of women for the past 17 years. Although South Carolina ranks number six in the nation, up one from last year. South Carolina continues to be one of the deadliest states in the country for women due to domestic violence. At P D Coalition from July 2018 through September 2019, we have provided 100 nights, 190 nights of shelter to victims. We have provided assistance to 85 families and filed 24 orders of protection. To assist victims, we now offer trauma counseling, in-group sessions, or individual sessions. We invite you to our domestic pain event on this upcoming Thursday, October 17th, from 7:00 PM through 8:00 PM at the Southern Fire Restaurant here in Dillon. With the help, with the help of the community, we can reduce the rate of family violence in Dillon County. Again, we appreciate you as community leaders for your support of the coalition's work to end family violence and we thank you for your efforts. Nate, Dillon County is a more compassionate community.
Thank you. They had a golf tournament, um, Friday, two Fridays ago and there were 80 teams and I think they raised, do you have any idea how much money we raised for the golf tournament?
We haven't gotten it to them yet.
Okay. Um, I mean, I'd heard 12, I saw Susan today and, you know, roughly 12, 13,000 is in, so, um, just a great, a great fundraiser that Purdue actually backs and Randy Brown puts on and does a great job with. Thank y'all. Thank you for all you do.
For upcoming fiscal year, we are looking to hire, um, someone to help do fundraising for us so that we could possibly look at maybe a shelter here in Dillon that's not in witness zone yet. But just to remind the council that we are still looking for a permanent site, we still do not have one. So, um, anybody know of a place, and we need to keep it centralized here in Dillon to make access, access to our victims a little bit easier. So, um, we definitely looking for something that we can renovate if necessary, we're willing to do that. We're going to start offering, once we get into our own building, telecommunications. So many of our victims do not have transportation, so we can offer that to them. So I appreciate your help. I'm sorry, by the way, I'm Carolyn Dooley, I'm the county coordinator. So we appreciate your help and looking out for us for that. And as she said, thank you for all the help that you've given us.
How long have y'all been using the golf course, been partnering it to do?
Um, a couple of years now.
Couple of years? What were y'all doing before that, before you used to go?
Just different things. I've actually talked with someone at Harbor Freight, we're trying to get them on board to maybe sponsor maybe something like a 5K race or something like that. So that's, still working on that.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, while Hayes abandoned the building act, why she walked it up in your packet, gave you some information from South Carolina Legislative, Title 12 Act, Chapter 67. This information actually has been around about five years now and I've spoken with municipal association today and they don't know too many locations who are utilizing this act. It has been, it was scheduled to be sunset or done away with. It has been, it was scheduled to be sunset or done away with December of this year, but it was extended until December of twenty twenty-one.
You want me to go ahead?
Yes, please.
Okay. Good evening, y'all. I'm here on behalf of Stephanie and Benjamin Mitchell. They own a building down on Main Street that they just purchased at the beginning of October that has been abandoned for about five years, or actually more than five years now, since I think about two thousand and eight. And Stephanie came to me and says, I found this tax credit thing, I need you to look into it. And so, what this ordinance would do is it would provide a credit to her on her property taxes for her revitalizing this building. So, what I did was I came to Mr. Glenn and I said, what do you need me to do to get this ordinance in front of y'all? And so, what I have given you just now is a copy of the ordinance, and then I've got A through K on there, I've broken it down into sections so that you can see the supporting documents I have for each section, because the law does require that the ordinance has specific findings. And I don't, I don't know how detailed y'all want me to get with that, but what it also requires is, of course, that the ordinance be passed by the council of the city, but also it requires involvement from the county and the school board, because those are also taxing entities that would receive a, that she would be receiving a credit from if this ordinance was passed. And so.
That meaning just this, she would do this in lieu of the taxes? She wouldn't have to pay the taxes because she's?
The way it would work is she has presented to the county, and there's a copy of it in here under Section B, a notice of intent to rehabilitate. So, in there, she's got an estimated value of what she thinks it's going to take to complete the building as she wants it for the business that she's going to have in that location. And so, what the code says is you take that amount, and then, once you figure out exactly how much it costs her to do this, if she's within eighty to one hundred and twenty-five percent of that estimate, when she gets her actual expenses finished, then up to seventy-five percent of the value that she spent, I'm sorry, up to twenty-five percent of the value that she spent on revitalizing this building can be given back to her as a tax credit over an eight-year period, starting the year that she puts the building into service as she's going to have a restaurant there. And so, if the ordinance is passed now, the credit doesn't start now, because of course right now, her taxes on that are actually zero. But I think they're going to be about a hundred and fifty bucks this year, because it's just an abandoned building. But then, once it's in service, that's when the eight-year period starts. She has to pay twenty-five percent of her property taxes, but if the ordinance is passed, she gets a seventy-five percent break for an eight-year period. We're assuming that eight years is not going to cover twenty-five percent of her rehabilitation cost, and we're assuming she's going to get that full period.
Okay. What did you purchase the building for?
To, one, to make the city look a little better, complete a project.
So, how much did you purchase the building for?
Oh, no, I don't really want to discuss that out in public.
Okay.
But you can't look it up on the.
It's actually in the packet. Yeah, it's in the packet. Her deed's in there to show you she owns it. It's in packet A, yeah. Part A has her deed in there, so you can check that.
Well, with that being said, what about the money that's owed to the taxpayers that the man didn't use? Want to go by that, Glenn?
I went to court on, what did?
Judge found me guilty.
But if he's found me guilty not doing what he's supposed to do, doesn't mean we're going to get our money back. That's going to have to be a civil lawsuit.
So, we spent order to pay it back?
No, 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 no. He has not been ordered to pay it back.
He could, he could file over the city on it. But I didn't give it to him. Johnny, no.
So, taxpayers are out of going.
As we say, we've been getting, but I don't know, what do you got? What do we got? Now, the use of the funds, there's the legality behind the non-use of the fund for the particular purpose.
Well, I won't mean to interrupt you, but let her finish.
Okay.
Because you're getting off the sub.
Yeah, we got off the sub, yeah.
Well, I'm just kind of open if y'all got questions or anything. I think the packet will explain it in more detail, but what it will require is, of course, this first reading, and it'll require some notice to the county and school board, which I have a proposed notice in here for them to sign, that I'm willing to do all the legwork on this to get it done. And so, if y'all have any questions, I'll try to answer them, but.
You can get up to seventy-five percent tax, you don't have to pay that tax for eight years, as long as it doesn't exceed what portion of your renovation?
The statute breaks it down to where you give an estimate, and then if you're within eighty to one hundred and twenty-five percent of your estimate, then you get up to twenty-five, well, you get twenty-five percent off of that, twenty-five percent of that rehabilitation cost can be spread over that eight-year period. But if you're over one hundred and twenty-five percent of what your estimated expenses were, one hundred and twenty-five percent is used to calculate that twenty-five percent instead of what you actually spent. If you're less than eighty percent, then you don't get the credit.
But up to seventy-five percent?
No, you get seventy-five percent off of your property taxes for eight-year period, assuming that.
You're around.
That amount does not exceed the twenty-five percent of the rehabilitation cost, which in her case, there's no way it's going to.
You wouldn't want to have a building and renovate it for, you know, a hundred thousand dollars and then get a tax credit of, you know, over an eight-year period of time of, you know, fifty thousand or, you know.
Now, make sure Stephanie understands, if the city does this, there's no guarantee that the county, county or the school board is on the books for this.
There's not, but here's the incentive. Right now, the tax on that building is zero. If she does nothing with it, I've talked to Ms. Kayne McKenzie, the tax is going to be around a hundred and fifty bucks. If she doesn't get the tax credit and get the incentive to rehabilitate it, then they're getting a percentage.
Of nothing.
Yeah, of a hundred and fifty dollars versus a percentage of three hundred thousand dollars.
Because the big, the big bang of the buck would be for you if one school board did something, because that's the biggest one.
And I've spoken to the county attorney, and I've spoken to Mr. Doug Broom with the school board, and they have both told me they will accept the notice, but they didn't mention whether or not they're going to object in any way, of course, but they'll accept the notice.
So, really, at this point, would they make a motion?
Not at this point. We've got on, I've got under new business to do this or to discuss if you want to do it. Ms. Hayes was here just to come across with, and it is, and also found out that, first and foremost, the building has to be a, what is known as abandoned building, and the definition is in.
Did not create any income.
Or at least, no, no less than five years. Five years or more did not have any income generated in that building. That's what's determined as abandoned. I don't really know how many have of those in town, and I could be wrong, and I don't think I am. Doesn't have to be in historic history.
It does not.
It may be anywhere.
It can be in the county or the city, but we're talking specifically.
So, you know, there's, there's opportunities that, thank you, Stephanie, for funding that, because she did. And as I said, as I talked to municipal association, they, they know about it, they push for it, but very few people are taking it. And those that know have taken, have gone the other route, done it on the personal income and not the property income side.
Any more questions?
The buildings that were just bought down the street, you know which ones I'm talking about, trying to get the fourth one? That would work with that, correct?
Yeah, it could, if, if, and we have to get, we know for a fact this one didn't do anything for the last five years or more in producing income. I don't know about those, and that's part of our, you know, as each, yeah, as each person comes in to request this, it's an ordinance per property, and this doesn't cover everybody. This just covers, in essence, what Stephanie's project is. If somebody else wanted to do it, we have to go through the same process for each and every one of them. But right now, this is still on the books until twenty twenty-one, December twenty twenty-one.
What's your timeframe to get the building demolished and get everything situated?
I'm having a hard time getting estimates. I do have several estimates. Once I get the project completely quoted to me and I'm happy with the number, because while I can afford a large number, I cannot sleep at night with a large number. So, depending on where we come out, I could start as early as probably December or January is what we're thinking. Once we get the estimates and get a general contractor that is ready to sign off on this project, we are ready to go.
Any other questions?
I do want to just, not on behalf of Stephanie, but just on behalf of the city, this was originally set to be repealed on December thirty-first of twenty nineteen. They have, the legislators extended it to twenty twenty-one, but it's not going to be there forever, so it would be great if we could find some way to let the city know, so maybe some other people would get involved. And abandoned buildings now, it will not apply if you're the person that was owning it at the time it became abandoned, so that's just another, had to be a new owner. Okay. Thank y'all so much.
Mary McKenzie, Seaboard Railroad Spur.
This is attorney night.
Yeah. Good crowd.
Glad to be here, thanks for having me. I'm here for Bradley Turner. I've got a few packets out, the procedure, but you'll take one and pass it out if you don't mind. Pretty simple, Mr. Turner, who owns Turner's Auto Mart, he's been in his family for decades. He wants to buy a portion of an old abandoned railroad spur. He recently bought a lot of land owned by Arthur Tompkins, Pittsburgh Paints, that area, and the old trailer repair building. He bought all that, so now effectively, property he owns brackets this portion of an old abandoned railroad spur on, on three different sides. And as you can see from the packet, it fronts East Hudson Street for about forty-five feet. It's about a hundred and twenty-five feet long. The one outlined in Sharpie is the one that he wants to purchase. If you look north of that, you'll see another lightly outlined parcel, the same exact shape but inverted. That's one that the city deeded to Arthur Tompkins in nineteen ninety-eight, and they deeded it to him by a quitclaim deed, and basically, it's a simple deed saying, whatever we have, we grant it to you. And they referenced, they're acquiring that property in a deed that was in nineteen twenty-nine given to the Seaboard Airline Railroad, so they could build this nice railroad spur. Well, they didn't use it, it's considered abandoned, that's what the records show. So, in the past, Mr. Tompkins' deed, as you can see it in there, this first page is printed out from the GIS website, then there's the deed I drafted, should you grant Mr. Turner the ability to, to purchase this land. And then there's the, the old deed that was granted by the city to Mr. Arthur Tompkins in a deep book, three oh eight, page one seventy-five, that was nineteen ninety-eight. And after that, there's no affidavit. And then you can see, I think this is a nineteen twenty-nine, no, nineteen thirty-six plaque showing, showing the spur. And coming down through here, if you turn here, this is a, if you look at three oh one this way, if you're going south, there's a old Pittsburgh Paints and the trailer, the trailer repair place, and then there's Turner's Auto Mart here. So, Turner's Auto Mart's here, here, he bought this, this, and, and this, so now he wants this portion. So, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. He's hoping you'll agree to do a quitclaim deed like you done for Arthur Tompkins in nineteen ninety-eight. Leave us for one dollar. The property's not being used. I think it's a, it's a hazard for a city just to own it. It's just a little abandoned piece of property, kind of a throughway. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
What this is, is the city, or back then the town, owned this property. They deeded it over to this railroad company, and in that deed, I think it said if it becomes a payment, it comes back to the city.
That's how, that's how we current that one is.
How big is that?
It's about forty-five by one twenty-five, about forty thousand, I mean, four thousand square feet?
Forty-five feet by one one?
One twenty-five.
And it's in, it's in the middle of his properties now.
Yeah, he brackets it on three sides now, since he's bought Arthur Tompkins' property.
And if it's something you want to do next month, will bring back an ordinance, but that has to be done in an ordinance form?
All right, do we, do we just instruct you to do that, and then we?
Well, no, I mean, I can go ahead and do it. I can go do it, you either vote for it or not. I'm just trying to give you.
I'll make a motion if you do it.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
For me to bring back an ordinance?
Right.
I think, I mean, that's the only way we can do it, bring back an ordinance.
Okay.
So, Larry, if you get with me here and make sweep, we will walk through, we can jack, we can.
Oh, sounds good. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Larry. Dave, you came for us, and I'm suffering.
This isn't my suffering, I'm professional.
You know, it is kind of great to see your age and Lawrence, Matt, and the people that grew up here coming back and, you know, participating in, you know, the city, and who we thank. Anyway. Is this a citizen's report?
Good evening.
Good evening.
To the Honorable Mayor Pro Tem of the Dallas, to the honorable council members assembled here this evening, and to the city administrator, Mr. Glenn Wagner, who works tirelessly to ensure that the city of Dillon functions efficiently and effectively. My name is Rachel Covington Banks. I'm here along with my sister.
You speak a little loud.
Oh, I'm sorry. Again. My name is Rachel Covington Banks. I'm here with my sister, Doris Covington, along with my brother in his absence, my husband, Colin Banks. We reside at five oh seven South Sixth Avenue in Dillon. We were born and raised here. I was brought up in the public schools here in Dillon, so I congratulate the newly-elected councilman. Our councilman in our community is Timothy Kouser, our neighbor. I'd like to congratulate Mr. Jay David, who incidentally owns property adjacent to our property. So, I want to speak to this body to address issues that continue to impact our community, commonly referred to as the Bottom. I've come back to the community after living elsewhere for quite a few years. Should you not be familiar with the Bottom, it begins approximately at South Second Avenue, it runs approximately to South Tenth Avenue, and it might even go beyond further, all south of Main Street. In the two years that I've been back, it's interesting to note, as others have observed, a seemingly disparity of services between the north side of town, south side, on the south side of Dillon versus the north side of Dillon. It is not my intention to pass any aspersions upon anyone nor any department here in the city of Dillon. I applaud Councilman Kouser, our neighbor, for stepping up to represent our community. He is about to deal with some issues, I'm certain that he and his family have witnessed the same issues that we have experienced after living in the Bottom all of our lives. Our family home was built by our father, Lawrence Covington. That was built close to about one hundred years ago. It stands as a testament to our family's hard work, diligence, and commitment to the community in the. It stands as a testament to our family's hard work, diligence, and commitment to the community in the Bottom. It is our concern that we've witnessed several differences in the application of service treatment between the two areas, i.e. the northern section of Dillon versus the southern section of Dillon. For example, Duke Energy trimmed and pruned all the trees on the northern side of Main Street, yet the identical power lines on the south side of Main Street were not. I called Duke Energy to inquire. There was no explanation. Why should this be an issue? I raised the question because it addresses the disparity of services. After my call in last week, they did indicate that they would address the issue in five to 10 business days. I want to believe that they will. Apparent question, why? The issue raises more questions confronting our community known as the Bottom. Trash, deplorable conditions seem to worsen. Those who own properties in that area are abandoned, unoccupied, and in deplorable conditions. Should they be held accountable? Those with the worst have ignored being in the Bottom. We know who they are. This is not seen in the northern section of Dillon, but why in the Bottom? Some years ago, I walked our community seeking signatures for the installation of a crime watch sign, which was successfully achieved thanks to Mr. Douglas Purnell. The question remains, why? Illustrating again the apparent disparity between our northern and southern areas for simply light services. When discarded items are for trash pickup, why is it necessary to call the city for removal? That does not appear to happen to our neighbors in the north side of Main Street. Why? Additional documentation is evidenced by the ditch, the canal, which surrounds the city flowing southward approximately 100 feet from our home. The last hurricanes of Matthew and Florence flooded our home as a result of an unmaintained ditch. The cause was the result of debris, trash, Styrofoam cups, bottles, everything. I know that the city now has a budget item to hire two employees to monitor and report these issues. I encourage council's support for this effort. I state for the record that we've met the city administrator to address our concerns regarding the above mentioned, as well as sitting emergency management coordinator several times. We've also attended and made a presentation, my husband did, before the county's Hazard Mitigation Planning Committee, raising concerns as to their responsibility dealing with hurricane flooding. We also met and discussed these same issues with the county administrator. For the record, the last Hurricane Dorian, we did not experience overflowing amounts of water in the ditch, the canal, as previously experienced from Hurricanes Matthew and Florence. I believe that this was the result of the cooperative efforts working together between the city and county of Dillon to address the water flow issue. I commend Mr. Wagner, Mr. Clyburn, and Mr. Moses Hayward for their cooperative work. It's a known fact that we are experiencing an environmental phenomenon never experienced before. Many fail to recognize. It's interesting to note that many young people have taken the initiative to address this issue, while many politicians do not. As you know, the area, the Bottom, will continue to be an ill-affected area unless council recognizes and appropriates necessary financial resources to address these apparent discrepancies. Lastly, addressing our concerns of disparity. When one does not see beyond their horizon, the living conditions of others are not seen. At the rear, the back of our home, the rear of our property, should one peer beyond their horizon, guess what's located? A junkyard. Vents broken down, overgrown weeds, discarded appliances, old cars, stored without regard to the safety and dignity of our community. The Bottom. The ditch that flows beyond our property is filled with debris. When brought to the attention of this matter, we were advised, talk to the owner, and he will do something. We did speak, directed, as directed. The only thing I know is that the property has worsened. Why? Disparity of treatment in the Bottom. That's located right behind our property. I ask, who shall speak to those who are unable, unwilling to address the issues and concerns for those with little resources? Who shall speak to those who feel they don't count? Who shall speak? Who shall speak to those who have little voice or those who refuse and are afraid to yield to those with a big voice? The more affluent who stand in the chatters be allowed to go free without penalty for their infractions? I don't think so. So to whom shall we speak? With my little voice, Rachel Covington-Banks, I've spoken. I will continue to speak truth to power. I've moved back into the community. I will implore that the council recognize and address these problems and ensure that our community, the Bottom, be serviced without indifference. Thank you. And I will read a copy of this report with council if you would like. I'll be glad. Thank you. If there are questions, I can ask anyone that would have any questions concerning the Bottom.
That ditch is talking about fields, and that new ditch goes across my land.
Yeah.
Back in the seventies, when I was young, they had that ditch down about 10 to 15 feet, but it's completely full. It used to be our main flow at one time, but they've covered it up, I think off of Hudson. They tiled it in another spot, they tiled it. But the pipe down there is pretty small, and it collects.
Debris.
And it goes across, and it floods everybody down there.
And the Bottom obviously is the lowest elevation point in the city of Dillon. And of course, if there is flooding, guess where all the water goes? Right down where? To the Bottom. Yeah.
How many days does Duke Energy, how many more days does Duke Energy have to respond?
They gave me seven to 10 business days. That was last Thursday. So I certainly hope they will come to the Bottom. The trees need pruning, they need cutting, they're all entwined with power lines. It's easy to see. It's very visible. Go across Main Street, all of those trees are pruned and cut and trimmed. Come down to the Bottom, not so. You have to wonder why the disparity. Why?
Rachel, let them know that if those trees fall on those lines, the entire community and the entire community will be affected and impacted.
That's where the Bottom starts.
After I spoke with you last week, I called Duke as well.
Did you?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner.
Now, those particular trees in question, is that on a rotation with them?
That's just something...
What did they tell you?
They looked into it. And that's just my contact that I had with them. And usually, they'll come through. I mean, they did some work. We had some trouble with them. I don't know, back during the summer of Burt over here, where they were cutting and leaving everything in doggone road, and they couldn't do that.
Whatever happens, you gotta pick it up.
We're at the mercy of Duke at this point. We don't get into power lines. One, we're not equipped. Two, and two is not our power lines. It's there, so we don't mess with them. That has been followed up with...
Anyone else? Citizens report?
I'd like to speak to what you addressed earlier about the planners and those types of things downtown. I know Bridget talked, it might have been last meeting or the meeting before, about our master plan. When is that supposed to come through, Bridget? Whether we'll know or not, whether we get the funding for that?
We should get some that, I think it's in November.
So in November, we should have, you know, a notice whether we're getting the funds for that master plan. And that master plan will help us develop whether, you know, we need new landscaping, whether we should pull up that landscaping. I think they probably might be able to do some, I don't know, I'm just talking off the top of my head. Planners and maybe, you know, color schemes for the buildings and that kind of stuff. So we are working on that through our planning committee. And also, I want to say, what's the name of my division that I'm chairman? And I get the job done, but I don't need to know what the name is. Organization. So on my committee, we are going to take upon as one of our jobs to try to take care of those planners. And we've already talked about maybe putting some lights in the trees. Of course, I know, you know, all that will have to be approved, but that's something we can take upon ourselves as that committee to get that done. And hopefully, maybe by December, we can even put, you know, some white lights in them or something, so that they don't have to be changed out all the time. It just looks nice. But that's something that my committee is planning to do. And then as well, we have all, so I've also been tasked to develop a downtown, I don't really want to call it a business owners association. I'd rather call it maybe an improvement committee or development committee or something like that with the business owners as well, because I don't want it to be called business owners because I don't want to exclude any other community member that may want to join that doesn't necessarily own a business. But I can tell you that we're working towards getting our nonprofit status and getting a plan to, just like I researched on my own, to find things to draw people into downtown. We're doing that to say, hey, you know, this is what we have to offer you and come to Dillon because you can get in now on the ground floor while everything is cost-effective and, you know, really prosper when this town grows. But, you know, grant funding is hard to find, for one thing. And I truly came upon this thing for me just because I was researching for grant money for other stuff. So it just takes time, you know, and digging, you're right, and digging. So I do want to say that I did contact the economic development person, Clay, and I have not heard back from him. But, and I know Bridget's trying to, we want to do this as well, get that packet together so that we can just say, hey, you're looking at a business downtown in Dillon? Bam, this is what we can offer you, you know? So, and speaking of that, I know Glenn and I have talked about the sewer and water connections. So is that something that we need to get on the, I guess, an approved ordinance board?
What she's talking about, if you remember, Jay, when you've been here at the time, back in February, I brought you a list of proposed incentives for new construction. And one of them was waters, water and sewer pre-tax permits, hospitality tax decrease over a period of time. I'll bring that back in November, and if you have any else that you want to add, you can add then, bring it back to us. But we need to put that in place.
But I feel you when people say, when you say the first thing people look at is our crime rate. But as citizens and community members, we also have to step up and say, it is not all our crime rate because we do get stuff that flows over from North Carolina to our town that happens to get arrested here that doesn't really belong to us. So it's not all our crime rate. But we also have to step up and say, this is our home. It's a nice place to live and raise a family. Please come join us.
Thanks. You said you're the chairman of the, you don't want to call it association or anything?
Oh, the one that I'm trying, that I'm getting together?
How often your business owners meet?
No, we are getting it together. We don't have a chairman or anything like that. We've got to establish our nonprofit status first before we can have that board and the meetings and all that. Once we get that established, we want to meet monthly.
Okay. Anybody else? Citizens? Let's move on. Old business, none, new business, purchase of a new vehicle for the street park.
We talked about this last month, and there was a motion made, and never gathered it's second. I was asked to bring it back for this month. This is a pickup truck that goes in Burt's department through state contract. $36,000 is from Herndon Chevrolet through the state contract. That's four-wheel drive, presently, Burt doesn't have four-wheel drive. And with the additional oversight of this storm drainage, that's become problematic, as I understand.
Comment?
You got any comments, Jay?
Yeah. I appreciate the feedback, and I was given, I asked for the fleet mileage on each of this vehicle and the repair costs per year. And they were all at high-mileage vehicles. And I think from their official standpoint, some of these need to be rolled out. We had one that was junked at 185. We're running about 35,000 a year repair costs. And of course, with the age fleet that Burt has, it's going to just get greater. I see the need in it.
Can I have a couple, I have a couple questions. Why are we buying a $36,000 vehicle when we're in the operating budget? We talked about this three months ago. Where we gonna get the money, Glenn?
It'll come out of our depreciation money in general fund.
Okay. We took $30,000 for the upbeat grants. The employees couldn't get a raise. Okay? Why are we buying a vehicle for the department head? Him to pass a vehicle down? When you could, if you really needed it, you buy it for the employees who can use it in a workday. And you can buy two for the cost of war if you really need it. But Dr. Wallace has mentioned many times to me, don't come and deliver the hour and try to get some, okay? So I'm trying to figure out now why are we going to allow this to happen?
That's between y'all to decide.
Well, I mean, I know none of you are talking about it.
What I'm saying is, I understand. What I'm saying is, I was asked to bring it, and that's what I'm doing.
I understand that, but I just want to know, we couldn't find the money for the employees, but we can find it now for one person to get a vehicle at $36,000, and it's going to be top to bottom boom. I don't understand it. The first responders or police officers, we just slap them in the face. That's what we just did. If this passes, we have slapped them in the face. Because those are the ones protecting our community. I'm directing the questions, you, Glenn.
Yeah.
I don't need to hear from them.
That's right, that's right. And I don't have an answer for you. I brought it to council. Is for y'all to pass or put down?
I mean, I understand his concerns, but I mean, it's all an integral part of our budget line. Vehicles, people.
Yeah, vehicles for the employees to use, not for one person to get and pass his down just because he needs a new vehicle. That don't make good sense.
But all his vehicles, y'all...
What about the other people that's got older vehicles than he does? I make a motion back there.
Can I get a second? A second.
All those in favor?
All right, let me make a comment. One, I think we talked about what we were going to do about the employees and, you know, giving them $10, you know, or so a pay period, or give them Christmas funds.
Give us Christmas funds.
And everybody wanted to do Christmas funds. We haven't turned our back on anybody. We haven't turned our back on anybody. We have pretty much written that into the budget. So, you know, you're being a little dramatic.
Hold on a minute. How many of the department heads have had a raise in the last couple of years, Glenn? Now, if you want to go here, we're going to go here. Has all your department heads had a raise?
I've had all of them have raised. I've had, too many employees have had raised because I've been asked to get a raise.
Now, won't they get the Christmas funds, too?
Yeah.
Okay. So that's where I'm going. And let's be fair to the hourly employees. That's what I'm asking this council to look at.
Okay. Next one is ordinance 19-06, Building Act.
This is the ordinance that Ms. Hayes was discussing in her brief summary of the South Carolina Abandoning Buildings Revitalization Act, where it would give property owners an opportunity to get a tax credit for abandoning buildings.
I make a motion. I'll start it.
I thought we had already.
No.
Okay.
That wasn't my.
Vote?
I.
You oppose? Okay, and we strike the third one. Councilmember report. Mr. Eller?
Okay, I want to ask you about the LED lighting for the town. If that's in situating that.
They did those on Main Street, which we didn't report. They changed all those in the business district on Main Street. They should begin here in the next month or so. Hopefully, in early November.
Okay, and, I was in the jail talking to somebody about the lighting on 34th?
We're going to get some of those homes there.
We got a new time clock in the city, correct?
That's correct.
Is the salary employees, are they questioning the time clock?
I think everybody is, except myself. And what we did, we went from an older manual where you put a card in, now it's finished.
So my question is to you, if an employee is two or three minutes late, how is that deducted over time clock? I mean, on time shoot?
It's seven, anything after seven minutes of the hour, that's when it's, what is it?
Fifteen minutes.
Fifteen minutes.
Okay.
And then anything, you can't clock in no earlier than seven minutes prior to your time.
Then you get fifteen minutes.
Chief Lang, I want to ask you about the motels out here. There's crime going on out here. I know you're aware of what's going on. What are we doing to eliminate this mess out here going on?
We have folks that are staying there. That is, they don't have a place to live, and that's where we're going. So we've got a drug problem out there. We know we've got a drug problem. We've got informants going in there buying drugs. And we are actively working on it. But it is a, I mean, it is a problem. It's a problem for us.
Are we making any headway with it today? Do you think we are, what, do we need to do anything different? I mean, are we doing anything? I mean, it's really a big problem.
Well, I mean, you arrest one, and you got two to take place.
The people that are living there, do you think they're from here? Or like I said, are they?
Yeah, they're from here. Most of them are from here. And they'll go and they'll stay out there for the evening time.
Because they're homeless? Or that's their choice?
Well, a combination of both.
So maybe we need to look at our homeless after here?
Best homeless. Thank you. Thank you, David.
Okay. I will have you back.
Where we at on the, on the Dillon, the fines on Main Street? I know some of them in charge and say what happened. Where we at with that?
You said buildings on Main Street?
Yeah, the ones that get the day to them.
Those, those that were written summons, I don't remember how many of those were. How many of those?
We've written, we're writing 10 summons already. Three was found guilty. One requested jury trial. And we have five pending that come before the municipal court judge. And we have an additional three we're waiting for their time to expire. And also, if they haven't full permits, it would be necessary approval with some new rock insurance tickets as well. All right, so when they have to do a trial, how long do you want to take for them to get to a trial?
I don't have any control of it. It will take a while.
So you can't?
I have to try them when they're scheduled.
But that's what I mean. Can't you schedule and put, pick, deal, what you're ahead of?
It's when the two attorneys have to agree to a certain date.
Can I make a comment? Glenn, on the last meeting we had on the street signage, is that being looked at? I see some sitting on the ground.
Yes, yes. Some had, sorry, been replaced. And in some cases, we put them up in the government.
Take 911, that's why I was really concerned.
You good?
Yep.
All right. Tim?
I have the same thing. I want to dito on what Johnny was saying about that. I don't have, I don't have a problem with the motel. We have a problem in our neighborhood. Just like we were saying about, he was saying about drugs. We have people walking around all the time tonight. And we kind of, I kind of said something one time before about it,